Mention, um, this is our first, um, time doing the WebEx which is going to be taped by Fair TV so that the public can actually see us talking and meeting. So I thought that would be a little bit better for our, our community, even if they can't sign in, they can have the opportunity to watch it on Fair TV as well. Um, and I just want to note, um, that comments can be, we're offering public comment too tonight, uh, this afternoon, but we also have, uh, the ability for the members of the public to email, uh, the whole, whole Board of Selectmen at B O S at Fairfield C T dot org, uh, with any, uh, comments or questions. And so I will call the meeting to order, um,
All participants are unmuted.
And so if we could just stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So item number three is minutes to consider an act upon the minutes of November 2nd, um, 2020. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And I'll second it.
Any comment or question?
None for me.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes, sorry, unmute. Uh, aye, thank you.
Okay. Okay, motion carries. Uh, item number four is a reappointment to hear and consider an act upon the following reappointments, uh, Burr Gardens Advisory Committee, Lisa Winton Callahan, um, of Beach Road, term 1120 to 1123. Lisa's unable to, uh, participate, uh, due to a medical issue with a family member. Um, are there any, uh, quest, are there any comments before we, uh, make a motion to approve?
None by me.
And I guess I'll just say in advance, um, in the interest of time, I want to thank everybody that's, uh, up for reappointment or being appointed, just, you know, thank you for serving and it's a lot to throw your hat into the ring and especially during these uncertain times. So really grateful for, uh, the commitment to engage in our community in this way. And I speak for all appointees today and reappointments.
I would like to echo those sentiments, especially in the time of COVID. And, uh, it's great that we have so many people around town that are willing to serve on these, uh, important positions. So thank you much.
And the one thing I would also ask is if someone is, um, replacing someone, um, or if someone's term has come up, I think it's the case with police and fire, if they are serving, um, to, to replace someone and no one is replaceable, of course, if perhaps we could, uh, Madam First Selectwoman, if you could mention that, just so we could thank the outgoing participant for their service.
Okay. So, um, if no further discussion, all in favor of this appointment?
Aye.
Reappointment?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item number five. To hear and consider an act upon the following appointments, uh, A Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee, Sarah Roy of Buena Vista Road, term, uh, 1120 to 1124. And I believe Sarah is with us, um,
Yes, I'm here on the phone.
Hi, Sarah.
Hi, how are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Oh, fine, thank you. I couldn't get my video to work, so I apologize. So I'm not audio only.
That's okay. So, uh, I'm gonna, um, open, well, I'm gonna do these each, uh, one at a time. So if there are any, I'm gonna open it up, a motion to approve this appointment?
So moved. I'll second it. It's Nancy.
Okay. Any discussion, comments?
I'm all good.
Hearing none. Uh, Sarah, I just wanted to say thank you, uh, for stepping up to serve on this committee. Uh, I've mentioned this before, um, when we've, uh, had appointments to this. This is a very busy committee and we deferred a lot of comments and questions from our community, uh, especially since COVID because so many more people were biking and walking around in our town that the, uh, the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee has been a welcome, uh, resource to our community for questions and, and comments and a whole host of things. So I really do appreciate you stepping up on behalf of the community.
Oh, thank you so much. And I, I appreciate when, uh, when Karen and Keith asked me to, uh, consider it, I was honored and I'm really excited to help support the committee and all the great work they do. Great. Well, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yep, aye. Aye. Motion carries.
Brenda, was there, hey Brenda, was there somebody that, uh, moving off that committee now?
I don't have that in my agenda. Um, typically Jen puts it in when there's, uh, Jen usually puts in who's replacing who. Um,
Okay.
I hope I'm not speaking out of turn, but Keith told me someone moved away that was on the committee and that's why they needed to replace that person.
Not speaking out of turn at all. Thank you so much for that information.
Thank you, Sarah.
Yeah, I mean someone moved.
And thank, thank you for stepping in. I think, um, our hope is just to be able to say thank you to those past participants. So if that person is listening, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, thank you, Sarah, um, for calling in. And item number B, Burr Gardens Advisory Committee, Jennifer Downing of Mine Hill Road, term 1120 to 1123. She can't call in because she had a dentist appointment, um, but she's very appreciative of the opportunity. Um, the other appointments, I do have people they're gonna be replacing, but this one I do not. So I don't know the whole entire background, uh, but can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second it. Thank you.
Um, she's not on, so I guess I'll just go right to a vote. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Item number C, Historic District Commission. This one requires RTM approval. Alyssa Stack of Essex Street, um, I believe she's on and she, um, is, uh, replacing , uh, Dr. Raymond Locke, who moved to be a full member on the board. Do I have a motion to approve?
Yes, so moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion or questions for Alyssa? Well, Alyssa, I just want to thank you for stepping up to serve on, on the, um, Historic District Commission. Um, obviously it's an important commission and we really do appreciate, I say this all the time, but it is, um, definitely felt strongly that I extraordinarily appreciate our community's service, stepping up and serving on our so many boards and commissions. It really makes our town much, uh, more well-run and more participated in. So thank you again for stepping up and
Well, thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Alyssa. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Now you're officially a member, Alyssa.
Great. Thank you very much. Looking forward to serving.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Item D, Parks and Rec Commission. Robert McKay Jameson, um, Wilson Street, uh, term from 1120 to 1125. He is on, uh, this and he is replacing, uh, the outgoing chairman, Scott Walker, who has, uh, really served for a, a long period of time and with distinction on our Park and Rec Commission as chair. So, uh, I would like to thank him very much for his service to our community. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And I'll second it.
Any questions for McKay or any?
First of all, I'd like to, uh, thank Mr. Walker for his, um, service. I did work with him a bit when I was on the Board of Finance, so I appreciate all his time and effort. Uh, second of all, I'd like to welcome McKay onto the board. Uh, he's obviously a friend of mine and, um, he, I know he'll do a great job. He worked on, uh, Fair TV previously. So best of luck McKay, you glutton for punishment, you.
Any, any further comments? Um, I would just say that I, I also, um, have known McKay for a while and we're actually CrossFitters together, the local CrossFit gym. And, um, so he's definitely a fit, uh, Park and Rec member. And I know you'll bring a lot of, uh, a good experience and, uh, commitment to the Park and Rec Commission. It is one of the busier, busier commissions, uh, so I, I wish you much luck and, uh, always reach out if you have any questions. I served on it once myself.
Well, thank you very much.
And thank you, um, McKay. Good luck and thank you to Mr. Walker. But, uh, McKay, thanks again.
Thank you.
If there isn't any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. All right, McKay, you're an official member of the Park and Rec Commission.
I appreciate the vote of confidence. Um, I didn't realize how big of shoes I have to fill and, um, now, uh, I'm a little bit nervous, but thanks so much.
You'll just, you'll do just fine. All right, we're gonna move to our next item, number E, Police and Fire Retirement Board. Nicholas Caruso of Barrister Lane, term 1120 to 1123. And he is, I believe, on, on the WebEx. And, uh, Mr. Caruso is going to be replacing Ken Brockfield for, uh, his last term on this, uh, commission. And so I want to thank Mr. Brockfield for his many years, uh, of service. Uh, he has served quite a long time on, uh, on this, uh, on this board and we do appreciate his time and talent, sharing his time and talent with our community. And if I can get a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second it.
I also want to, um, A, welcome, welcome Mr. Caruso and say best of luck and thank you. And B, I want to, uh, extend my appreciation to Mr. Brockfield, who I had the pleasure to serve with on the Board of Finance. And he's got a long and distinguished record serving the town, uh, with his considerable financial talent and acumen. So thanks so much.
And, uh, I will echo that. While I did not work with Mr. Brockfield personally, um, I appreciate and know how much work he has put into serving our town faithfully and diligently. So thank him very much. And, and to you, Mr. Caruso, thanks for stepping in and you have your work cut out for you, but I, and my dogs think so too, but, uh, want to welcome you. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Nancy. I look forward to it.
Well, Nick, I really do appreciate you stepping up to serve on this board. Um, it's been a lively board this past year. So, um, you will be, you will have a lot of work to do and there's a lot of information that passes through it. Um, and so I appreciate you taking, really taking this seriously and stepping up to serve our community.
My honor and pleasure. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any further questions or comments? If not, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Mr. Caruso, you're official member of the, uh, Police and Fire Retirement Board. Welcome aboard.
Happy to be aboard.
And you're welcome to stay on the meeting or you're welcome to sign off? It's up to you.
I'd, I'd like to see you through.
Okay, all righty. Item number six, um, is, uh, First Selectman, re, Selectwoman Reappointment, Fairfield Housing Authority. Um, this is Rita Waterman, who, uh, fence in place, um, term is 1120 to 1125. She can't call in due to a conflict, but, uh, she has served our, our housing authority, um, very well and she's done a very good job. And the members on the, uh, the housing authority think she has done a very good job as well. So I am reappointing her and it's not for a vote, it's just, um, information, uh, only, I believe. Isn't it? Or is it a vote? I can't tell.
Looks like it's just information. It's First Selectman Reappointment. Looks like it's just information.
Okay. So the next item, um, is, um, Chief Administrator Officer is going to, um, answer any questions on this item. This is to hear and consider an act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Chief Administrative Officer. Resolved that the attached bond resolution entitled the resolution appropriating 1.686 million for environmental testing remediation costs at various locations in the town of Fairfield, Connecticut related to contamination of the town's fill pile yard and authoring the issues of bonds, finance such appropriations, be and hereby is approved. Uh, I just want to talk a little bit about this, um, before I hand it over to Mr. Bremer, who's been working on this, uh, on my behalf, uh, quite a bit. But this, um, this is something I think is fairly, um, uh, this is something I think all of us are well aware of. Uh, we have been talking about this for a year, um, that we were going back and forth with, uh, the, with the DEP trying to get sign offs. We got the letters of notice, uh, uh, violation in the beginning when I first took office. We were going back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. And we had put in, uh, remediation plans, all the seven sites. We all know about them. We've known about them for some time. And then, uh, DEP kind of, and you remember I updated the Board of Selectmen about this, kind of, um, changed the rules in the middle of the game and we had to go back and have LEPs and redo everything and go back and forth. And I sent a lot of that stuff and updated the, uh, Board of Selectmen and I have updated the, uh, Board of Finance on these issues as well. Um, they finally signed off on our consent order and so now we're, we have the approval to go forward with cleaning up the sites. Some of them are schools. There's two that are schools that are gonna be, uh, tricky. We have to work with the Board of Ed to decide when that'll be an appropriate time for us to clean up. But the other ones, we can, and some additional testing needs to be done at the fill pile site. And these are all based on a consent order and approvals from DEP that we've finally been given. So we had given a heads up to the Board of Finance about this, I think several meetings back, that we were hoping the consent order would be approved soon. And I also had updated, uh, the Board of Selectmen and that once we were approved and we knew exactly what they were gonna be asking from us, that we would be able to put a figure on that as far as the testing and the remediation. So that's where this has come from and I will, um, do you want to make a presentation or do you want to answer questions?
Uh, no, I, I think I should start with a, if I may, I just want to go over a little bit of the documents that I sent you on Friday and then I'll be happy to answer any questions, whatever you wish. Uh, what I sent you is basically a, you have a cover sheet and then you have a lot of, uh, supporting documents behind the cover sheet, which basically, uh, includes all the actual estimates, et cetera, et cetera, that we got from tie and bond and others. And I, I, I don't mean to bore you with the background stuff. Obviously, if there's any questions that you have, I'm happy to answer them. But I really want to focus on the first page, which I think is the most important page. As you can see, we're requesting, uh, 1.685, uh, uh, million in total funds needed. We basically, uh, have exhausted the, uh, previously, uh, allotted funds that we received through our operating budget. And so we're gonna be asking to bond this month, this, this, this amount. Uh, if you'll turn to the very top box, you'll see the seven sites that, uh, that remediation is required. You'll see the remediation costs. You'll see the consultant oversight costs and you'll see the totals. And that's all pretty straightforward. There are three sites, McKinley School, the Osborne School, parking area in Mill Hill are the three sites that, uh, Brenda referred to earlier about education. And we have a little bit of timing with that. Obviously, they don't want us to be there, uh, when the kids are going to school and all that kind of stuff. But, so we have a little bit of timing with that, but I'm sure we'll be able to, uh, address that in the very near term. Um, the other four, I think, require a lot more discussion. So I'd like to say, if there's any question on the first seven, I'm happy to answer those. And then I thought we'd get into, uh, the other four. Uh, are there any questions on the first seven?
Well, there are in the sense of overall. I have lots of questions and, um, for full disclosure, this information was sent to us late Friday and I know, um, that has been, uh, per usual, but I did not have a chance to read it, to read it through thoroughly. Couple of questions came up to me that I, I did ask you, uh, offline about someone else having brought up in a public forum, the question about this. So I just don't feel informed enough baseline. Um, so my questions, you know, I'd rather have the opportunity to really read through it because I don't think I'd be able to ask informed questions at this point. So that is just full disclosure. It's, um, I recognize the importance and the urgency of spending the money so that we can solve these issues. So I don't want to undermine that. I'm, I, you know, again, if I had a few more days to even 36 hours, um, but because it leads into other questions about philosophically like the bonding and I just, I haven't had a chance to do any of the due diligence. So I'm sure I have lots of questions, but none that would sound intelligent at this point.
So Nancy, if I could, um, answer that question about this gentleman who posted on the bond, if that helps you. Um, I asked the purchasing director and his response to that, um, gentleman, uh, who contacted us. Um, he was talking about this company not being, um, registered with the state under the Concord, um, registration, which is really for small businesses, um, under the Secretary of State. If you go to the Department of Insurance, um, website where companies like this are listed, they are listed, um, on there. And they're also listed, um, with, they're listed with the Connecticut Department, um, of Insurance. And they're also listed on the Federal Bureau of Fiscal Service concerning which bonding companies are certified. And they're on that as well. So just to be, just to be, uh, clarify that, um,
Yeah.
This company is, is certified and registered.
All right. And I appreciate the clarification there. Um, and that's again, one of many. I don't even, I did not, as I said, have an opportunity. So for me, um, I would want to table this to a date certain of the next meeting, just to give me an opportunity. But if that's not where the tide is, um, I also can abstain. I, I just don't think in fairness, because I, I really didn't have a chance to read any of the material. So I do, I skimmed it. That question was raised. It was brought to my attention. So I, I asked that one question and that's helpful. Um, so I guess I should officially make the motion to table, to an, table the action to a date certain of our next Board of Selectmen meeting. I don't know if it would have a second, but I'll try it.
I'll, I'll second that for discussion. Let me, uh, can I ask a question here? Um, I have some questions if, if I might.
Sure.
Is that okay?
Sure.
Thanks.
Sure.
So, um, the estimates, uh, I'm, I'm staying on the schedule that was, uh, prepared. Um, bonding needed for environmental testing and remediation costs. How certain are we in these estimates? I read a little bit, um, particularly in the top seven, um, that it was based on a per tonnage amount. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
So that's a per tonnage estimate. Is that, and then what about the consultant oversight? Was that a direct quote for a bid?
Yes. Yes, it is. These are all hard numbers. I mean, I think, I, I mean, and we also have, have built in a 10% contingency. So I'm very comfortable with these numbers.
Okay. So the, so the hard numbers, so we know exactly the amount of tonnage that we need to pull out of these places? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, pretty much. I mean, as I said, we also have a 10% contingency, which I'm sure, which I'm confident will cover. Any, any small addition.
Who is the consultant oversight? Is this all tie and bond and kind of their fee for testing after the fact?
That's correct.
Okay. So the process here is that the stuff gets dug up out of the locations, gets trucked to another facility, tie and bond comes in, tests what's remaining, gives us either a pass or fail on that test, which would determine whether there's another phase of this, uh, remediation that needs to take place. Is that fair to say?
Yeah. Uh, but I think, uh, I would, I would add that the, um, uh, the chances of further remediation would be very small. Because I, what everyone is, is, is expecting is that we've done enough testing on these sites that, uh, upon the removal, there shouldn't be any additional removal required.
Yeah, I understand that. And, and this is all, are these all sites that are, I just want to confirm this. This is all directly related to the stuff with the fill piles? Is that correct?
Absolutely.
So can I just interrupt for a second? Um, the motion was to table. So I think we have to, uh, talk about whether it's, we should be tabling it or not. Um, I, I, if I, can I jump in Tom on that part?
Sure.
I, I, I would say, um, you know, I'm sorry it is not have time to read, um, a couple of this information, Nance, but, um, I mean, this are, you know, I would, I would, uh, say that we've, you know, we, we, this is all in accordance with DEP. They walk, they worked through the consent order. This is all done based on what they want us to do to clean these sites up. And honestly, I, I, our, our town has had that contaminated soil there for so long and I have wanted it cleaned up from the day I got in here. And I, I was like jumping for joy when they finally signed off on the consent order. Um, I, I, I wish, I mean, I wish there were some questions that you could ans, ask so we could try to answer them and so we at least get started on cleaning this, uh, contamination up.
Um, I'm happy to try. I did, with all due respect, and I'm sorry, I did talk, I reached out to Tom Bremer this morning at 11. So, um, and which you responded you'd get back to me. Sorry. Um, I, listen, I will go, like, I don't want to be the, listen, I, I respect the importance of, of doing this. So that's why I said if it's a date certain in, in two days, I, I can't imagine that that's gonna make the hugest difference. Cause again, I, for me, it's also trying to understand where this bond request comes in. And I didn't have a chance to even do that due diligence. I hear what you're saying and I don't dispute at all. I mean, of course, we all want the town to be cleaned up. Like, we all want this, nothing more. It's just for me, I don't feel comfortable at all voting in support of a $1.6 million expense bonding, um, without having done a little homework. So if, if, if the move, if the, if this group feels like waiting two days is not gonna put us back, then that would be my hope.
So Nancy, the Board of Finance is meeting on tomorrow night and I personally don't have time to have a Board of Selectmen meeting any other day but today. And just to be clear, um, the question that you reached out to, Mr. Bremer, was about this bond issue. And we did answer, I did answer that. Um, and I told him that I had to look, I was still waiting for, uh, uh, our purchasing department to look into it. And I would have the answer tonight, which I, I gave to you about the surety bond.
Again, I, you know,
So, so I think, uh, I might suggest a path forward here so we can all be on the same page on this. Um, just a thought for consideration. Um, number one, I think, I, I can ask a few questions here and also direct if, if I need follow-up information, which I think that follow-up information could be put together relatively quickly. Uh, number two, um, we could hold a special meeting in a couple of days, even if it's just for a half an hour, um, at whatever time is convenient, um, in order to have all three of us with. Number three, I think, um, the Board of Finance, uh, there is an, there is one item I see as relates to the Board of Finance here, which they have a bonding policy. And this would clearly be outside the bounds of that bonding policy right now. I, and by the way, I'm not saying that this shouldn't be bonded. Let me be very clear. I'm not saying that. But I think they should, um, discuss and adjust the bonding policy to allow for this.
But I think they should discuss and adjust the bonding policy to allow for this. And then we could vote on it, knowing what their bonding policy is, as well as any follow-up questions. I do think we should have a discussion about it now, to the extent we can, to direct any follow-up questions that may be required. So we can have a very quick meeting and vote on it in a couple of days, if that's, if that's the flavor. That'd be my way forward. I, Tom, a quick question for you as relates to my commentary there. What is the timing of this remediation?
Well, we want to do it as quickly as possible, for obvious reasons.
I understand.
I shouldn't say that. They're obvious to me. And forgive me. Basically, we've started some remediation, but we're running out of money rapidly. And what I'm very concerned about is that the contractors that we have, we've kind of put this off for months, frankly, because of how long it took to negotiate.
The consent order.
Consent order in front of deep. And now that the consent order's in, we, we have, we have contacted all the contractors. We've urged them to keep their, their costs in line, you know, their pricing in line. And we've been successful doing that. And we've just started to remediate because there is a little bit of money left from the previous funds. So I'm very concerned, can we delay it a day or two? Of course. Can we delay it a few months? We can't.
Nobody's asked. I don't think.
No, no, I understand.
Yeah, let me ask a question.
So can I make a suggestion? Maybe, Nancy, you could withdraw your motion to table. And then we can have a discussion on the item. And, you know, Mr. Flynn can ask questions and we can move through the process and then see how you feel after that.
Absolutely. I can do that. I'll withdraw my motion and open up discussion and just listen. And I'm looking through the backup now, too, so.
Okay.
Okay, great. All right, so then, do we have to vote on the withdrawal or? I don't even know.
No, I'll.
Mr. Ball, why? Oh, okay, okay. All right, okay, so let's go back to the discussion and I'll open it up for questions. Mr. Flynn, do you want to start?
Yeah. So, thank you. So where have we begun remediation already, Tom? Based on this, you just said we had begun remediation where?
Yeah, I think we're doing Old Damn Road. I'm sorry.
Well, I thought we did the testing. A lot of this was testing and also additional testing that was required by the DEP. So a lot of the costs were.
I think we've started Old Damn Road, which was the, Old Damn Road, we started at the tennis facility. But we, there's not much money left, so we're kind of.
Well, there's not much, okay, okay, so the only one that's, the only one that started is a grand total of eighteen thousand or nineteen thousand dollars. Or rather, sorry, twenty-seven six oh seven. So that, that's immaterial. So none of these other sites have we actually begun the remediation. To Brenda's point, we've done additional testing. We've come up with a game plan. But there's no current remediation at these other seven sites. Is that fair to say?
Yes, it is.
Okay. I think we said before, this is all directly related to the fill pile. This isn't old stuff. This is directly related to the fill pile project.
That's correct. This is, these are all Julian sites.
Right. I was actually, and maybe this is just me, I knew, like, to Brenda's point, or to the First Selectwoman's point, the vast majority of this is not a surprise. I was actually a little bit surprised at the Jennings Beach parking lot. And that's a substantial amount of money, actually. Penfield is separate, though. Is that correct? That's still in the investigation phase.
Yeah, we're, yeah, that's, if you just look at the, yeah, Penfield, we can get to in the bottom. But the, the top seven, Penfield is not on the list. That's correct.
That's testing, additional testing, but not remediation. Yes.
Right, so we don't know about Penfield, though. Was, was the.
Well, if you want, if you want, I can.
But it's included in the cost is testing for Penfield, remediation of Jennings, and remediation of the seven sites. And then, once we get some conclusion from the testing at Penfield, obviously, we'll have more of idea what that's going to cost. Depending on, of course, what DEP tells us we have to do.
I was surprised at the extent that was Jennings Beach. I remember it being there. But based on just sheer dollars, that looks like the most expensive. So was that the most disturbed site? Is that true?
Yes, that's, that has, that has the largest amount of stuff that we have to, stuff that we have to remove. Yes.
And where was that, Tom? That was, what was done in the parking lot? That's under the parking lot or what?
I think part of it is under the parking lot. That's correct.
And where's the rest of it?
I'm not sure. To be honest, I'm not sure. I'd have to.
I think there was some filling in around near the sandcastle for sidewalk replacement or blacktop or something to that effect. But we could obviously.
I can send you a map.
Brian Carey could send some additional information. But these are, the costs are based on the plans that we sent with our environmental attorney and with Brian Carey up to deep. And they signed off on these testing and remediation.
The largest, the largest, the largest cost, if you look at the bid proposal on page, I don't know, two or three, it says the largest cost is to remove the contaminated soil filled, which is now, it's now about a hundred and forty thousand dollars of that number. So.
So that was, Tom, that was, that was going to be my question, right? So what this is talking about, I was looking, and again, like Nancy, I got this, you know, Friday night, which is, I know it was tough to put it all together. But I'm looking at this one-point-seven and I'm looking at the discussion of the costs. And, you know, I'm looking at the footnote below. This is talking about remediation and oversight. What about getting, if we pull this stuff out and truck it out, we've got a backfill with clean materials, correct?
Yeah.
Is that included in this?
Yes.
So every, so this is an all-encompassing numbers. It's remediation, rehabilitation, and the oversight of this. This isn't just remediation.
Well, that's correct. I guess the way to look at it is when we're finally remediating, I mean, what I've been saying, what I've been saying to DPW is, number one, I don't want to do anything unless deep has signed off on it before we touch it. And then at the end, when we call it remediation, we want to be done. So my attitude is when you go in to clean, that means we'll never go, have to go back there again. And that's what these numbers reflect. And I guess, maybe that leads to the second box, if you will. And if you want, I can talk about this and give you, maybe give you a better sense of where we're going with this.
No, I want to stand the first, no.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry.
No, I want to stand the first box.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, in Jennings Beach and in these other areas, if this means pulling out the soil, and let's say in Jennings Beach, some of it is parking lot or sidewalk, as Brenda said, this is the full cost of ripping out that soil and if need be, putting in a new sidewalk or a new, or repaving the parking lot. This, I want to know, this is the all-in cost.
It should be the all-in cost. Yes, it is.
Yes, it is. So where's that, do we have that breakout somewhere? And forgive me, there was a lot of information here.
Well, in the, in the, if you, again, and I mean, keep referring to the bid proposal. It's got here, if you look at the bottom, backfilling compaction, placement of topsoil in deep. So this, we're done. This is it.
So I see the.
So I'm assuming that this is all in.
So, yeah, but that, the comment that concerns me is you just said you're assuming. So what I'm, I don't want assuming. And I'm not trying to be pain in the butt about this. But I'm sitting here looking at it, everything I'm seeing is topsoil, right? I'm not seeing anything that says sidewalk, if that's, if that's involved. And again, it might not be. I'm not seeing anything that says paving, if that's involved.
All I know is that my instructions were very clear and I just have to go with it that this is the all-in cost. That's what I wanted, that's what I've been told.
Yeah, who did you give those instructions to?
Brian Carey, DPW.
Is he here?
I don't believe he's on the call right now, no.
Okay.
Tom, Brian told us, and so did it, the environmental attorney. This is all in cost. This is to take the soil out and put everything back the way it was without the soil. Soup to nuts, as Brian said to us in our presentation.
Yeah, I haven't seen, yeah, and I just, I don't have the document in front of me, other than I just, as Tom was talking, went back and re-looked at the documents provided. And in each instance, it talks about topsoil. So again, I don't know, and that might be perfectly appropriate because maybe there is.
And what I meant was, like, it was around, you know, dressing around the sidewalk, you know, where they put grass in, or new, or dressing around this, or things of that nature. But it's my understanding through the presentations from Brian and from the environmental attorney, deep signed off on complete remediation and we included the cost to put things back the way they were.
Right.
So, yeah, you can take these numbers as the full, full cost.
All right.
Oh, Brian Carey just walked in.
How long are, what's the term of bonding you're, what's the term of bonding you're trying to put on this?
Twenty years. All right, Nancy. Brian, go ahead.
No, please, go right ahead.
Brian Carey just walked in and the question that I'm answering for Tom is, are these, Tom Flynn, are these, these top seven, are these all in cost? Like, done to nut. Soup, as Brian says, soup to nuts. So, yeah, they're all done.
So Brian, Brian, I want to ask it a different way. If there was a sidewalk there that is disturbed, this replaces the sidewalk. If there was paving there that was disturbed, this replaces the paving.
So the area that we're actually removing at Jennings was part, was backfilled a former water line. And then it kind of breaks out into an area that was former parking lot. But the question is, yes, it will return the site to existing conditions.
So if it was paved, it'll be paved. If it wasn't paved, it's not paved.
Correct.
Okay.
This site does not require any paving.
You're breaking up, I'm sorry.
He, he said the site does not require any paving.
Do any of the sites, or is, or sidewalk, or paving, or this is all just pull it out and topsoil?
Correct.
Okay, and that's for the top seven sites?
That's right.
Okay, and since there's one site that's currently being remediated, I guess, when does work start on the other sites? Do we have a schedule or we don't know?
It's driven by the bonding and the money that these funds are going to be used. I'm trying to get the work started as early as next week on the sites that we have available funding for.
What does that mean, sites that are available? In other words, these sites or the other sites?
No.
These sites.
Southport Beach and Sunset Avenue will be done, started next week. Sunset should only take a day. I mean, it's not much soil there. And then Southport is probably three to four days.
And what about the other side? Those are de minimis amounts.
All depends on funding. It all depends on funding.
No, okay, so what, Tom, I'll ask it another way then. If we approve this today, the Board of Finance approves this tomorrow, does this go shovel-ready on Thursday?
It would be, but I think I still need RTM approval.
So the answer to your question is, yes, most of this is all shovel-ready work. We're just probably, because of the contractor is a little, is on the smaller site, we will do the sites methodically, meaning we'll go through them one at a time sequentially.
Okay, so when's the RTM due to vote on this?
Well, it would have to pass here and then we would have to put it on their agenda in December, early December.
Right, so this thing isn't, I'm just asking, this thing isn't starting until December, right?
Well, some of it's started, but you're right, to continue it on, you're right. We're gonna, we're gonna have to stop. We're gonna have to wait. If the RTM can't vote on it before December or whenever, then the following day is when we will continue.
Understood, understood.
But that's actually, is there any world in which the RTM can? It seems like their next meeting isn't until that December meeting. So is there any world which they would have a special meeting or is that not possible? I'm just trying to get at.
Yeah, they could, Nancy. I mean, we could request after the Board of Finance reviews it tomorrow night, if they would have a quick special meeting just on this item. I mean, that's actually a good idea. I would love that because if it gets too cold, we obviously want to start cleaning it.
I mean, for me, like, I just keep hearing the urgency. And so it's, I would love to understand, like, if shovels can be in the ground as early as next week, then it seems like there is that urgency. We all want to resolve this. But I, if you could talk a little bit, just so I can understand it contextually in terms of bonding and one-point-six outside of the regular channels, can we just talk about that a little bit? I don't, just for my own clarification, because again, it felt like a big nugget. You answered the question, yes, about the concern that was raised this morning. But more broadly, I don't know how this fits in.
Well, let me just, if I may, let me just talk about that a little bit. Because I think, if we put bonding policy aside for a moment, I checked and I see John Staffs from is on the line. This is all bondable, so I'm not concerned about whether or not we can bond it. But I think, if you want to step back from five thousand feet, if you look at it a little bit differently, these seven sites are ready to be remediated. When we go to the next box, we start talking about Penfield and some other sites. Testing remains to be done. You think of it like, what I've learned over the last few months is, I look at it like, when the testing is all completed on all the sites, all the remaining sites, we then have to sit with the, with our outside LEPs and we have to come up with what's called a remediation plan. So we will be voting in a few months, after this testing is done, on funding remediation plans for all these different sites. And that takes a few months. And then after those remediation plans are approved and written and approved and, and, and passed by the deep, we will then have a very good idea about what the overall costs are to remediate those sites. And so then we will be back yet again for the actual remediation of what I'll, what I consider the more major sites. So it's kind of a three-step process now. And these seven sites, and you'll see in number eleven, we even have some additional site investigation for, for what I would consider very small sites, but still need a slightly more testing to be done so that we can either remediate them or remove them off the list altogether because we haven't found any problems there. So in terms of bonding, to me, this is the first, this is the first step. The second step will be the remediation plans. And the third step will be the additional remediation on the additional sites. And as I said earlier, the sites that remain after these seven will be more major sites and will require what I would consider to be more money, significantly more money than the numbers we're talking about here.
So, what does that mean, Tom? Go ahead.
What is, what does that mean?
Somebody wants to talk.
Um-
Go ahead.
Well, I had a follow-up question, but-
Go ahead.
What, you said, you started, uh, this next, this recent explanation by saying bond policy aside? Why? Sorry, if you could, again, educate me, I'd-
Well, I'm not, I'm not sure what, what, uh, uh, Tom was focusing on in terms of the bond policy. The first question in my mind when I got involved with this months ago was, is this even bondable? Uh, how, and, and, so I asked John, uh, to, uh-
So, Tom, let me ask you the question. Tom, let me ask you the question. Yeah, so a couple things. Uh, number one, absolutely, this is bondable. Number two, there's no question for Mr. Stastram as to that regards. Um, the town itself, through the Board of Finance, a number of years ago, adopted a bond policy that wasn't based on legal. Um, it was based on the town's, uh, how they wanted to manage the debt level. Okay? And that bond policy very specifically, um, talks about not bonding things like, um, uh, computer equipment. Alright? But bonding things like the schools and things like that. It also lays out, um, timeframes, whether it be 20-year, 5-year, 10-year, uh, analogous with the useful lives. Um, what wasn't contemplated in that bond policy was a situation like this. So, since this bond policy is there, just for good governance, they should probably adjust that bond policy and say, in this instance, um, what, what is their feelings on bonding these type of costs? And how long should they be bonded for? Now, we could pass this tonight and they could adjust the bond length, uh, at their discretion, at their, their meeting tomorrow night. But that's the thing, it's not whether it's legal or not, that I completely understand. It's how they wanna go about financing it and what they wanna do to the policy as regards something like this. That is what I meant by it.
So, I, I guess that would, that would be up to them, uh, tomorrow night because, I mean, honestly, Tom, there's gonna be some, you know, obviously, we have this, you know, we have this serious issue that has to be cleaned up, um, and it's a lot of money that none of us ever expected to have to spend. And we don't know what the additional costs are coming down the pipe as more testing gets done on our fill pile, at Penfield and so on and so forth, so, um-
So, let me ask the, can I ask a question on that, Bren? Um, item number 10, WPCA Significant Environmental Hazard Investigation. Um, is that just related to the fill pile? Or is that related to the additional work required because we have the huge construction project that'll need to take place there in the coming years?
Okay.
Okay. Let, let's just go through the, uh, the eight through 11 then. Eight is the landfill supplemental investigation. What that basically is, is that's the fill pile. You know, we always talk about the fill pile, but-
Sure.
That's the fill pile itself. And that additional money will be the final, we've, we've already gone through a lo- a long, uh, testing of the fill pile. And that testing, uh, historically and traditionally, the way it's normally done, you do a major, uh, uh, testing, you send that off to, to the state. Then the state always comes back and says, we want you to do this, test this area, test that a little bit more, that sort of thing. So, number eight is to finish, we've gone through that, that process. And number eight is to finish off all the testing on the fill pile. So, that's what that is for. On nine, Penfield, we still have some testing that's required underneath the, um, uh, parking lot as well as underneath the main building. So, that's what that is for. Um, on number 10, we, we've included that because this is, it's not based on the fill pile. What it's based on is, we, uh, as you know, we're going through the hardening project. As you know, or I'm sure you're aware, um, there were, there were some contaminants found along the path of the, uh, har- the wall itself. We were PCBs, et cetera. So, we've worked out an agreement with DEEP to continue that project along the path. One of the things that the DEEP has requested and really insisted on is we need to test the entire site of the fil- where the, uh, the, where the, uh, WPCA, uh, is located. Um, and so we have to do a grid pattern, we have to do testing on that. So, in, in, in collaborat-
Tom.
Go ahead.
Yeah, that's, I would've thought that and, and I understand that. Um, and that makes sense. I just don't think this should be, um, part, it, it shouldn't be lumped in with what's going on with the fill pile. It should almost be separate because in addition, this is gonna be part of the overall cost of the WPCA project. Um, and, and the funding mechanism might be different here. To pay down the debt is what I'm talking about. So, this, this $200,000, which I'm not, um, saying doesn't need to be spent, I'm not questioning it. Um, it's, it's separate and apart from the fill pile situation.
Oh, no, you're absolutely right. I mean, it, but, uh, how we book it and how we decide to fund it, to me, is a separate question from-
No, it's not.
Alright, do we wanna, do we wanna do that now?
Yeah, 'cause, 'cause you wanna track it separately so you can fund it separately? Because what's gonna end up happening is you're gonna create an administrative nightmare. And when we start talking about, well, how much did this thing cost? You go, oh, well, remember in that bond, it was, that included 200,000, that's gotta come over. I would say it should be segregated now and kept pristine. I think if you're gonna do bonding for this, that's related to the fill pile, you should keep it just fill pile bonding.
Jared, you wanna jump in?
Yeah, this, this is Jared. We can still track this separately. It doesn't, uh-
I understand.
It will require the same authorization, but we can continue to track it separately.
I understand. Yeah, no, I know how to account for it, trust me. I'm just saying, I would, I would segregate this out in a separate bond.
Yeah, but why do that if we can track it? It doesn't, that doesn't make sense and we would have a very small bond for all these side bonds.
'Cause you create an additional- Go ahead.
I was gonna say, this is gonna be part of a larger bond. This is an au- this is an authorization.
Correct.
From what I understand, this will be part of more items in, in a single bond issuance.
Correct. So, wh- I, I completely agree with Jared. What you would do is package it all together, that's immaterial. It's having the authorization separate, is what I would say. I would keep the authorization particularly for bonding when it comes down to the fill pile completely pristine as compared to ongoing operations, which unfortunately, this $200,000, this doesn't have to do with the fill pile. It has to do with the fact that it was a Nike site, 50 or 75, whatever, many years ago, right? I mean, that's what's driving that.
Alright, so, Mr. Stastram, could you weigh in if this is something we should do or if it's okay to do it the way that we have it?
Brenda?
I think you-
It's definitely okay to do it, but I'm just saying I wouldn't. John, do you have anything to add?
No, I mean, if it's not, if this is technically not related to the fill pile, we might wanna change the beginning of the resolution to say, and ancillary sites or something like that. Uh, I had assumed that that was sort of something that emanated from the fill pile.
And that's my problem, John, is everybody reading this going forward is gonna have the same assumption, which is why I think it should be pristine in a separate bond resolution. Exactly what you just said.
Okay, well, we, we can, we can certainly, uh, change the resolution.
We can amend it right now if you wanna come up with the language, um-
Sure, I can do that. We can do that. I, let's continue the discussion, but let's just come back to that.
Can you, um, can you, can you, um, maybe summarize for the, the one who doesn't maybe understand it fully in the room, being me, uh, changing the resolution in layman's terms, what does that get us?
Yeah, it would lower the co- I would lower the price that we're bonding on this resolution so that this resolution, as John pointed out, um, specifically is related to costs incurred due to the fill pile, the situation. Item number 10 on this list, which is WPCA, while important, while it needs to be done and while it's environmental, has nothing to do with the fill pile debacle. It has to do with the need to go forward with the other reconstruction of the water pollution control, um, infrastructure in future years. So, what the, what the proposal would do, Nancy, would be to take this 202,000 out of this and just do a separate bond resolution. The two bond resolutions that Jared points, they get bid on together. It has nothing to do with the actual financing with the bank, but it allows the internal paperwork to track and allows the internal paperwork to be pristine as it relates to the fill pile expenses for the town.
And doesn't do anything to delay on either front?
No.
No, we just changed the resolution, so there'll be two separate resolutions. One will be, the, the total of which will be the same number. But one will be 202 and the other will be whatever the number is.
Correct.
Hey, Tom, I don't wanna complicate this at all, but just one question for you folks to think of. Is the 202 reimbursed from user fees from the WPCA or is that also paid for by tax dollars?
John, that's exactly, that's the exact right question because it could be a combination of the two. Sorry, if that was to me, Tom.
Which is, can I ask a follow-up question, Tom Bremer? Does the answer to what Mr. Stastram is just suggesting, does that impact? What's the impact of either answer?
Well, I think, I think it's a- Sure, go ahead.
There's no real impact, um, there's no real impact. What that means is you would pass two separate bond resolutions, but if, if the WPCA stuff was being paid for by user fees, the town would just enter into a memorandum of understanding with the WPCA that the WPCA was, uh, was reimbursing the town for the debt service.
Yeah, and the issue with that, John? Go ahead, Tom, sorry.
No, I was gonna say, I would, I think what Tom Flynn is raising is an issue, uh, it's, it's, it's the precursor to the conversation that we're gonna need to have regarding the whole WPCA-
Right.
Uh, upgrade, upgrade, which is going to be- Uh, we need X amount, whatever that number is. And how is the town gonna fund it? Is the town, are the taxpayers funding it 100%? Are the users fa- uh, funding a percentage of it? And all that kinda stuff, but that's a conversation, that's a much wider conversation, obviously, and, and, uh, which we're, we're gonna need to have at some point.
You are 1000% correct, Tom.
But honestly, I'm more focused on trying to get the, I'm, I'm trying to get the investigation, uh, done. If, if all these people are gonna be walking around doing an investigation on neighboring sites, I'd, I'd love to be able to tell them, okay, when you're done here, walk over and do this. As opposed to complete everything and then have them remobilize and come back to do more testing. It's just gonna cost the town a lot more money.
Tom, I couldn't agree more. I just think for payment purposes and that, and tracking purposes, keep it as separate as possible so that we know exactly what the fill pile issue called us, cost us. It's absolutely correct.
I understand. I understand. So, I think we've beaten this to death. Do we have any other questions, uh, on this?
What was the, um, and forgive me for not knowing this, but last time you talked to the Board of Finance, I didn't get around to that meeting. Um, and you warned them that this was coming, what was their flavor on the bonds for this? Or bonding for this? Did you have a wholesome discussion on that or no?
Not really, no. They know it's coming and they know we're gonna bond it, but the, other than that, uh, we really didn't have much of a conversation.
Um, what's the timing of numbers eight through 11 here? 'Cause that's a different type of, um, that's a different type of work than the remediations efforts.
You mean number 11? Is that what you said, just said?
Say it again.
Was your question about number 11 on the list?
Sorry, it was, my apologies, it's probably a bad connection. Numbers eight through 11, um, it's a different type of work. Um, it's, it's not remediation. What do, what do you think the timing on it is?
Now, we wanna do it now because it's gonna take three or four months to complete. Um, and I'm really hoping, as I said earlier, once the, once the data is in, then it takes a month or two to analyze it, then it's gonna take them a couple of months to write up their remediation plan. So, we're talking a long timeframe before we're really gonna know what are the overall costs to remediate, uh, how long will it take and all that kinda stuff? So, again, sooner we can get it started, the sooner we'll be, we'll be able to divide, uh, provide those answers. Because every time I've raised the fill pile, the first question out of everybody's mouth is, how much is this gonna cost? How much it's gonna cost? And there's no way to know until your data is in and we finally have some remediation plans that we can talk about.
Right. And, and, Tom, to that point, it's also gonna inform the discussions, and I know we're not gonna have the information, but it's gonna fo- inform the discussions we have about capital planning and bonding. And that's why it's very important that the Board of Finance get their arms around what they wanna do with the bonding policy. Because this is, um, you know, this could be substantial here and we've got a lot of other capital needs that we've been discussing.
Absolutely correct.
Are there any additional questions or?
Well, no, I guess I'll, I, I'll make a comment if I may. Um, I appreciate the opportunity for the discussion, um, and having the opportunity to ask questions. Um, and in, with a leap of faith, because I've already admitted, you know, not having the time in advance of the meeting to do, do diligence, so I appreciate the opportunity today to ask the questions. I would just, um, really hope, moving forward, Mr. Bremer, that's, you know, for these kinds of big deci- decisions, just to give us, you know, time, because I want to, in fairness to the public, really have the opportunity to, to vote with a fully informed, um, having, you know, been able to read the material and ask the questions in advance. And while this opportunity has been good, I am, for myself, making a decision based on the questions asked today, but not 100% holistically how I like to, um, you know, I'm, I'm generally have the opportunity to be more prepared. So, I would just hope and plead, and I know this has not been the way it's been done historically, but with big decisions, to, to have an opportunity with enough time to do the homework, so. I will support today because again, I, I ur- I understand the urgency and, and the town deserves to have this work done and have, you know, this positive step towards a healthy, clean Fairfield, but as I said, it's, it, there is some amount of good faith on my part.
Well, I think it's also helpful, Nancy, for us to have these, uh, questions and answers in the public eye so people can actually hear them, you know? And so I think it's a, it's a good exercise for the community.
Definitely, definitely. Definitely, I just like, I just wanna inform my questions even, 'cause I don't even, you know, now I know, you know, we've all asked some good questions, but not having read the material thoroughly. And again, I had the opportunity to review as we're talking, but I just, just to pitch for some more advanced warning when possible, please.
Yeah, I, I understand what you're saying, Nancy. This was fairly complicated material to get through. I had to head start, having had the, the background on the, on the Board of Finance with the bonding, but it is, uh, challenging material to get to. There's a lot of information here, um, and a lot of questions come up from it. I, I did have one more question as it relates to Jennings. Is that all related to the parking lot area? None of that is related to dredging or anything in the marina area, is it?
No.
No.
So, that's all, so that's all completely separate?
Right, it, what, if you remember back when the first funding, um, when we were doing testing at Penfield, it was for under Penfield and under the parking lot. There was no dredging involved in that.
No, but we did do some dredging over in the marina over at Jennings and I just wanted to, I didn't know- No, but we did do some dredging over in the Marina over at Jennings, and I just wanted to, I didn't know whether this had seeped into there or any of this related to the dredging, dredging over in Jennings. And you also brought up a good point there, Brenda, which is you brought up Penfield, which I meant to ask earlier, so thank you. I've been waiting with breathless anticipation to understand where we stand with the reimbursement of the FEMA grant there, which at least was somewhat, at least held up with some commentary over the fill. What do we know about FEMA and the opportunity to get that money? Because that again is an incremental expense that might be related to this overall fill pile issue.
Well, my understanding, and I asked Jim Went and we appealed, we got denied by FEMA and we appealed it, I think, and I don't know exactly, but I could have Jim Went send, I think he did send one a while back when people asked about this early in my term, a memo to the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance, kind of just outlining the timeline. Obviously, this happened before I came in, but we were denied by FEMA, and I think we appealed one or two times.
Twice, twice.
And so they told us that we are still waiting on an answer because of COVID. They're backed up on everything, but the sense from, from our Conservation Department and our zoning department was, our chances of being reimbursed weren't looking too good.
Which was, by the way, just so that we're all aware, it's absolutely, this is the second time we were appealed. Now, we did have outside counselors on this. They were specialists in FEMA. And when we got the first rejection of the appeal, the outside counselors informed us all that that was an essentially kind of a foregone conclusion in that they were highly confident that we would win eventually, and they helped prepare, as I recall, the second appeal. And the first, the first appeal was to the, to the regional office, wherever the heck that was. And then I thought that the second appeal had to go all the way up. And then my understanding is we got rejected for the second appeal, or we haven't heard back on that one yet. That's kind of where I'm at. Do we know?
So, I mean, we can, we can talk about that, I guess, you know, we can, if you can always feel free to email Jim Went to ask him for, for additional information, but again, we're still where we were last time people asked about it. We're waiting to hear from the federal government.
Okay, so we don't have an answer on that?
No, I didn't. If I had one, I would have, I'd shared it.
Yeah.
Do you have an amendment, any language you want to use to amend this, um, resolution, Tom, that you wanted to change it?
Sure, yeah, absolutely. I will make a motion to amend the bond resolution that's before us to reduce it by the amount of $2,202,000 even. For, and take out number 10, which is the WPCA Significant Environmental Hazard Investigation, to keep this bond specific to the work related to the fill pile remediation efforts, the ongoing fill pile remediation efforts. And I'd like to see a second bond resolution, which would need to be written to handle that 202,000 separately. So I don't think we can approve that tonight. So that's my motion.
Can you say it again succinctly so I know what I'm seconding?
Reducing the current bond resolution, reducing, reducing the current bond resolution that's before us by $202,000 related to number, to item number 10 in the schedule, the WPCA Significant Environmental Hazard Investigation, taking that item out.
Okay, I can, I'll second that.
The amendment is before us, I guess, right?
Could I ask a clarifying question?
Who's, who's that?
Bond counsel.
Sastrom.
Hey, Mr. Sastrom.
Uh, Tom, I understand you're reducing this resolution. If you did want to approve the other, would be, would it be appropriate to split this into two resolutions? The understanding, the second resolution would just be for $202,000 and would cover the WPCA project as you outlined it? And then vote on, and in fact, in effect, take this resolution and split it into two and then vote on both of those resolutions as the amended resolution?
I have no problem doing that. It's just, I don't have the specific language for the second resolution. But yes, that's exactly what I'm trying to do, so thank you for your help.
I think the first resolution is clear because we would take what's before you and just reduce. Every time it says 168000, it would be 148400.
And that's what I just seconded, correct?
Yes.
Correct.
Second resolution, if you put on splitting this in half, and I think the matter is before you because I think you've got the entire project, both projects before you and the entire amount. The second resolution would be a resolution appropriating $202,000 for the WPCA, whatever, however you just outlined it, Tom. And then we would just do it as a $202,000 resolution in the same form, exact format that you've got before you, if you're comfortable doing that.
Yeah, I am comfortable doing that, but as you pointed out, that second resolution has to take out and not refer in any way to the fill pile issues. That's my only concern.
Right, so what is the, what is the description, what is the description you used, Tom?
It's in the schedule and it's WPCA Significant Environmental Hazard Investigation.
So what I would suggest, the language you want is a resolution appropriating $202,000 for WPCA Environmental Hazard Investigation and authorizing the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation. The description in part one would reflect that's the use. It would be then reflect, we just take the 202,000, put that in, in paragraph one, put that in paragraph two, and the rest of the resolution would be the same as the, as the resolution before you, if you're comfortable doing that.
I'm 100% comfortable doing that, yeah.
And do we factor in contingency? Do we fact, is there anything that needs to change with language there?
It's included in it, Nancy, contingency.
Okay.
So I think then the reformulated resolution from Mr. Flynn would be to take the existing resolution to reduce the one before you to the 1484 and then split the resolution in half to also approve a resolution for $202,000 for the WPCA Environmental Hazard Investigation. And obviously, those two resolutions as separate resolutions would then go to the Board of Finance tomorrow.
Yes.
Sorry, back to my question, Brenda, can you clarify? Do we have to adjust the contingency amount since it's 10% of the total, though? Am I underst, I'm just trying to follow.
Yeah, actually, I think you're, Nancy, Tom, I think, I think you're right. However, my guess is that the contingency is less necessary on the investigation and more necessary on the actual remediation efforts and other things. Is that fair, Tom Bremer, or no?
Yeah, we don't need a contingency on the 202.
Yeah, we just had that conversation. We don't need it.
Right, so I would leave it on the other one, and the fact that it's a little bit higher doesn't bother me, given all the different sites involved, just in fairness. So it's a little over 10%. I'm actually okay with that for, for purposes of my motion.
Yep.
Do we need to restate what we, what you moved and what I seconded? Or is it in the conversation, assume that we are all on the same page?
I'll leave that to counsel.
I think you need to make a motion to amend, Tom, and then a second on that.
We did. I, I made the motion, Nancy amended, and Nancy seconded it. Then John came in with the commentary related to the, to the, um, second motion, which, the second resolution, which is an elegant way to do this, so thank you.
But would the, now, given this, with the second resolution, do we need to go back to, I'm wearing my WPCA hat, do we need to go back to that body or? No.
No, I mean, if they, if they clearly asked for the money and it's gotten this far, I'm assuming they want the money, whether you address a resolution or two resolutions.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Just looking out for my guys.
Mr. Sastrom, what would you suggest we do to tie this in a bow nicely, since we all know what we're trying to do here?
I would suggest, Mr. Flynn, that you make a resol, you make a motion to amend the resolution that's before you to create one resolution for 1484 for the matters that are before you and to create a second resolution for 202,000 for WPCA Environmental Hazard Investigation.
Thank you, I will move it.
And you can vote on them both together if you'd like, because it's an amendment to the existing resolution.
I will withdraw my original amendment, and I will propose the amendment as just stated by Mr. Sastrom, which breaks this into two separate bonding resolutions, carving out the WPCA expense of $202,000.
I'll, I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
Nope.
Um, I, well, sorry, one last comment. I guess I want to go back to, in terms of while we're on this subject, just perhaps a further consideration for a next time. Here, consider and act, perhaps for matters of this great urgency, urgency importance to the town. Because these discussions are so important, Brenda, as you point out, Madam First Selectwoman, maybe we could here and consider when possible and then save the act for a next meeting. I recognize the importance and I recognize that winter is upon us and all those things, so perhaps not relevant for this particular moment, but just something, you know, I hope that we can consider in agendas moving forward on matters of such importance. But I, that is my last comment and question or statement.
Okay. Any other comments?
No, we're just voting on the amendment right now.
Right.
I had, I had seconded, so that is.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure there were no further comments on the discussion of the amendment. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The, the motion, the motion to amend has passed. We're back to the main motion as amended. Any further discussion? I mean, do we have a motion to approve the motion as amended?
Oh, boy. So moved.
Second it.
Any discussion?
I would just urge, I, I know, I would just urge when the Board of Finance takes us up tomorrow night, that they do also look at the bonding policy as a whole and not just this motion and figure out and advise how they want to manage this going forward as it relates to fill pile related costs and what they want to see for bond resolutions.
All right.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Uh, the next item is item number eight, Information Technology Director to hear and consider and authorize the purchase authority to enter into a master services agreement with SCube Incorporated to assist the town with implementation services concerning the software consulting associates, SCA, Municity, software product offering of land use permitting and inspection system as detailed in RFP 2020-63 for the proposed fees detailed in the revised SCube proposal dated 9/21/2020 and their statement of work document dated 8/20/20. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'm a.
I'll second it.
And we have IT Director Dave Kelly on the item, also our Purchasing Director Gerald Foley. Gentlemen?
Yes, hi, this is Gerald Foley. Dave is helping with the recording, so I told him that, that I would kind of step in and provide everyone with an overview. So what we did is the town, this is back in March, we issued an RFP for the land use permit and inspection system. What we did is we had three companies that made submissions, and from those three companies, there was a series of interviews held, and at the end of that interviewing process, there was the unanimous opinion of all the committees, all the participants in that committee, that we go forward with the Municity product. So when we, we reviewed all the submissions and went through them, the, the issue that we had before us was is that all three of the firms had actually given us much higher prices than what was, what we really had wanted to, wanted to go forward with. So my office worked with, with Dave Kelly's office, the IT department, to kind of go through the proposal submission from the company from Municity and basically more narrowly define the project so that it fits within our budget. The end result is that we've got, we had an offer presented to us that was $99,000 and change, which was just slightly shy of the $100,000 that's been appropriated for the project. And the project as it is, is we have two components. We have an implementation partner, that's that company, SCube, and what they're gonna do is basically they're taking the product, this Municity product, they're gonna work with the town's IT department to basically get the, the project fully up and running with one department. And the department that we're gonna start with is the building department. And once that department is fully set up and operational, the IT department is gonna dovetail and basically bring in all the other town departments. We haven't set up a specific format and what order the other departments will be put in, but we are going to start with the building department, and then from there, go out to the other departments.
Can I, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Mr. Foley, is Dave Kelly on the phone or not?
He is there, he's, he's, yep.
I think I'm, I think I'm here if you can hear. Yeah, you guys, so that just said something that automatically scares me from a, from a management perspective, because what I heard, what I distilled from what you said was, the original project is, we originally scoped it, and what we really need was above our price point, so we dumbed down our ask to fit within our price point.
No, no, yeah, let me, I'm gonna rephrase.
Yeah, my question immediately comes, does the solution fit the need? Or are we not getting what we need in terms of the system?
Right, so I, so what happened was is the interpretation of the, all of these companies, that, what we, what they were gonna have to do is basically meet with each individual department to create. So in essence, this particular project involves multiple departments. So what all the companies specifically, they, they determined that they thought that they'd be after meeting with the town planning and zoning, then meeting with conservation, meeting with building, meeting with engineering, meeting with health, meeting with assessors, meeting with fire marshal. So they're, all of their hours, they had thousands and thousands of hours implementing this project. But what we, when we picked the company, which we did, the Municity, we went back to them and said, no, what we want is we want a full-bolt solution. However, our intent is, is that the town's IT department is basically gonna be pushing this product forward, starting with one department, and that one department, again, reiterating myself, is starting with building. But we're not giving up the, the product, the product and that we're getting as a deliverable is exactly what we wanted. But what we've done is we've gone back to this whole implementation component, and we've basically focused it so that we're just doing it for, for one department.
Okay, so you're buying? Time out for a minute, okay?
Yep, go ahead.
Because now what I'm hearing is, to fit within our budget, we're not rolling.
Because now, what I'm hearing is, uh, to fit within our budget, we're not rolling it out across all departments, we're rolling it out against one department, and then we might rely on our internal guys to roll it against all the other departments. I want to hear from Mr. Kelly, I want to hear from Mr. Kelly, because Mr. Kelly's the one who has to deliver this.
Yeah, to be frank, we did not expect to have a company implementing the product at the, at the level that the companies responded with. So, frankly, we had thought that we would have to work with the departments all along to implement any, a product, but the vendors assumed that they would be doing all of the work, and they quoted us a price for that, because, I guess with most towns that they approached, the towns don't really have much of an IT department in place, or someone that's able to extract the information out of the existing systems and databases, and move them into the new product. But here in Fairfield, we do actually have a, a software systems analyst that can do that kind of thing. So, we accepted the, the idea of having them implement one department for us as a training exercise, and to quickly get that department online and, and get, get us rolling, but then we would take it from there. And we also, you know, assured them that we would be able to extract the information from our current systems, and prepare it in a way that they could just easily import it into their systems, without taking thousands of hours of working on cleaning up the data. So, that's, that's...
So, Mr. Kelly, you are committing, then, that you have the resources available to roll this out across multiple departments, after the first implementation is done on the first department, so this is really kind of a train-the-trainer exercise?
Exactly.
And that we're going to get full, and we're going to get full value for this software by buying it, and it's going to be rolled out across all the departments, and you have the internal resources to make that happen?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. How much is this for, again?
Uh, there's, so there's two, there's two components, um, one, we have the, the implementation, and then the implementation component, that's for $49,500, and then we have the software component, and that's for the balance. I'm, I'm sorry, four, it was forty, I'm, I'm misreading, and my apologies, um, yeah, so we have the, we have, yeah, we have soft, yeah, right, so we have two components, we have this implementation component, and then we have the software component.
And those are represented by numbers eight and nine on our agenda.
That's correct. Right, and so, and so those, those two, when you combine them, come up to $99,160, that's the, or what we'll call the total first-year cost. Now, what the company that we are going with for the actual software, what they've agreed to do, is that they're going to prorate our first year of our subscription to match our actual implementation date, so for example, if we were to roll, start rolling this product out in January, and say we were to go live in February, we would basically be paying for the product from February through June, so they would prorate that amount of the product, and we would be paying less than a full year's cost. And then, starting in July, we would basically be, that would commence our first full year, and then we would pay the full rate of the prescription for the software, and then every year thereafter. And the rationale behind that was, we were trying to dovetail it with the, the operating budget cycle, so that we were, you know, in line with the funding, so that it matched year after year after year.
Yep. So, the funding is the operating budget, correct?
Correct.
And this is all completely funded, and this is all just for the contract itself?
Correct.
The town attorney has reviewed the contract, and all stipulations, and required insurance, and all the regulations that we need to be followed to protect the town are all in place? Can I assume that?
Yeah, the town attorney's online, but, but, yes, he, I, I would, the answer in the affirmative.
Mr. Baldwin, is there anything in the contract, either, either of these eight or nine, that concern you?
I think there's something wrong with this audio.
He, he's muted.
All right, now you can hear me, right? You hear me now?
Yep.
Yes, yes, you can hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right, thank you, sorry, um, yeah, there were, there were some minor technical changes in the indemnification terms, termination terms, and, and addressed satisfactorily, so it's not, it's not identical to the contract which you have in front of you now, but, in essence, it's all been vetted by me, and now in, in a form which is acceptable to me.
Yeah. And you're convinced that the town is protected as much as it should be for something like this?
Yes, with those changes that I had put into the contract, the answer is yes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Baldwin.
Can I just ask more for my own edification, couple things? Will we need to purchase, will there be any big purchases in terms of hardware, and forgive me if you've answered this, to make this product functioning across departments? And in terms of the ongoing cost of the software, how many users will it be available to all town employees?
The, one thing that kind of surprised us is, all, all of the respondents, none of them suggested that we buy any special hardware. I expect that, at some point, we may want to purchase some kind of a large-format scanner in case somebody walks in with paper documents, and we want to help them scan them directly onto their electronic permit, but, as it turns out, it, most other towns apparently don't provide such facilities, that doesn't mean that we shouldn't, or can't, but, we, we asked each vendor when we interviewed them, do you ordinarily install extra equipment for the public act, for the public access, things like that, and the answer came back, no.
In the, in light of the fact that we are going towards a more modern, efficient town hall, if we were to do that, regardless of what other municipalities are doing, are we looking at $100,000, $500,000?
No, no, a large-format scanner can run anywhere from $3,000 to $10,000, depending on the model and size and brand.
So, so not significant, and then in terms of broad use, is, are these, are these programs designed to work across departments with all employees, what is the, is there an up cost to adding employees?
There, there is no per-seat or per-employee pricing, it's a, it's licensed for the, every relevant person in town to use.
Thank you, I, I don't have any further questions.
Is every, any other further questions?
I'm all set.
Can we, does it make sense to move to vote on item, the two items together?
I'm inclined to do that.
So, I make a motion to vote on both item, what is it, eight and nine?
Yes.
I would second that.
And waive the First Select Woman's need to read them, if also agreed on?
Very good, all in favor of the, uh...
I would second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Of, of the, of the motion, and I would just like to say for the record, that I've watched Dave Kelly and Gerald work extraordinarily hard over this past year, working to implement this system with our department heads, and talking at length, many, 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 many meetings, and working through the details, so that we could begin to implement this system in our town, to bring a part of our town into the 21st century, so I just want to thank you both gentlemen for all your hard work and your due diligence on behalf of our community.
You're welcome.
Nice job, guys, thank you, I look forward to it being rolled out, I'm sure that other town departments do as well.
Thank you.
All right, so, a motion to approve the two items as, uh...
As written?
Amended, yes.
So moved.
As written.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All righty. Moving right along. To hear and consider and act upon any other business which shall properly come before this meeting, and I will provide a COVID update, and so, we did have a planning meeting today, so, I just want to say, I wrote some notes here, the number of positive cases in Fairfield, and across our state, continues to increase, increase, Fairfield was moved into the red category among 100 other towns of the 169 in our state. Numbers of cases per day could significantly exceeding where we were in peak of the first wave, and our Health Department Director shared during our planning meeting today that the peak of the second wave is expected in January. Some positives, though, he reported, that I would like to share, is that there are better therapeutics in hospitals now, which present more options for patients, and that the stay for critical cases in the hospitals is at about 50% less than it was. It's expected that our hospitals will start being challenged again in January, and our new nursing homes are starting to be impacted again. Currently, Fairfield's cases are about 50% general population, 20% elderly facilities, 30% university. Universities are working to clear out campuses after Thanksgiving, they are providing a lot of testing right now to get students safely home. We are working to include messaging to college students from Fairfield who are returning back to Fairfield, we did include this in the newsletter, but we're going to talk about, we're getting some additional guidance from the state, but we're going to start doing some messaging through social media, as well as included in the newsletter on Friday, to ensure that parents in our town, or students are coming back here, understand what the guidelines are going to be. Testing right now across the state has become inconvenient with the wait times, and the town has been working to try to secure a temporary facility to come in, a testing facility to come in, but we haven't secured any dates yet, as the rest of the state are all trying the same thing, trying to get additional testing done in their town. With an increase in positive tests, the Health Department's contact tracers have a much larger volume of calls to make to residents, but through grants, we have been able to hire more contact tracers to assist with the increased workload. However, if you have received a positive, and I want to say this for the, the public's, well, edification, if you've received a positive COVID test result, and have not heard from the Health Department, you can call 203-256-3022, 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. Based on the Connecticut Department of Health Alert System and Framework, public events should be canceled, and community gathering points should be limited. Additionally, the state recommends postponing all indoor activities and outdoor activities where masks or social distancing cannot be maintained. Most importantly, and I can't emphasize this enough, to our public, if you have symptoms, stay home. If a household member tests positive, get a test and stay home. If you are pending results of a test, stay home. Through our contact tracers, our Health Department has reported to me that many residents are failing to follow these guidelines, which has caused dozens of our residents to have quarantine. Charts and data on Fairfield cases, including age, gender, nursing home statistics, testing results, different trends, and university statistics can be found at the website that we have, www.fairfieldct.org/covid19data, and I'll open it up for questions or comments. We do have a resident who wrote in today to ask if he could make a comment. Mr. Danzer, are you on the line?
Yes, thank you very much, Madam First Select Woman, Matt Danzer of Encore Road. And my, my comment is, is sort of a, a question as well, as we're heading into this increase in COVID-19 cases in our town, in our state, in our country, I'm hearing more and more, both through my community involvement, and from, you know, news stories around the country, that many people, especially people who work for hourly wages, are finding it difficult to, to stay home, while they're awaiting the results of a test, as, as you just said, is such an important part of preventing the spread of COVID-19, and many people are foregoing getting a test for exactly that reason, because they don't want to find out that they're positive, and then be forced to stay home. And I was wondering, I, I know that the state has certain programs that are at varying degrees of difficulty or ease of receiving, but I was wondering what the town is doing to encourage people who are in that sort of position, to, to seek the testing that's so important, and to make sure that they're taken care of in the time when they can't go into work as a result of that testing, thank you.
Um, thank you, so I would just say that, I think what you're saying, is there's some kind of funding available to assist families through the state, if they have to stay home for quarantine?
I mean, I'm, I'm curious if the town is engaging in any sort of efforts to either funding, or working with local businesses to make sure that people who are hourly workers, and would have to forego potentially two weeks' worth of wages, while they're also struggling with rent during these difficult times, and potentially with purchasing food, especially with shortages in certain areas, I'm wondering if the town is doing anything to help the people in that situation, so that they, they can make the decision to stay home, without having to, to make that trade-off?
So, I, I don't know if you're aware, but we did establish a COVID-19 relief fund very early in the pandemic, and it raised a significant amount of money, and people, our residents have applied, and can continue to apply to that fund for assistance, and we also have had an enormous amount of donations to our, our food, our local food bank, Operation Hope, there has literally been residents who have dedicated their time every single weekend for food drives, and our, our Operation Hope has done an amazing job, and because they have seen a huge increase in the amount of people coming to them for assistance with food, and so we, our community has stepped up, and we've been able to meet that need, anyone at all who needs any assistance, has food insecurity, can get exactly what they need through Operation Hope.
Also, social services can assist, and Julie DeMarco, the amazing Julie DeMarco, Brenda, just to echo and add to what you're saying, case by case, they don't necessarily provide the financial assistance that Brenda's, Madam First Select Woman is alluding to through the fund, but offer a lot of different supports, and they're, she's pretty amazing.
Yeah, Julie's done a lot, we've, we've delivered thousands of meals to seniors across the town, also medical pickups, picking up people for medical appointments, picking up their prescriptions and delivering them, and the COVID-19 Fund, COVID Relief, can be used for medical housing, support services, childcare, auto loan leases, utilities, or other items upon request and explanation, so that's why we set it up, and our community has been very generous in donating to that. Tom or Nancy, do you have any additional?
Ju, just something that was interesting for me, in having to deal with a situation where my son was contact traced through a school, a small school that he attends, it was unbeknownst to me, that regardless if you are contact traced, and you get a test and it's negative, you still have to, just, be in quarantine for 14 days, so I just wanted to reiterate, which maybe, people may be well aware of that, but, just to reiterate that, even if you do get a negative test, and you've been quarantined because you've been contact traced, you do have to, from the 14 days of exposure, have to stay, stay put, and that's important, too, because there is a lag sometimes, and when the virus symptoms, or the contagious period, so I just wanted to, to echo that.
Any other questions or comments? Any other, um, questions or comments?
Can you, um, comment just again for the public in terms of, um, with college students coming back, and, and I know you've listed, um, in your updates, and, and it's on the town's website, in terms of testing sites, um, there's going to be an increase in influx of people coming in and wanting to get tested. Have they increased any, um, of the sites or the hours of operation, or, or is there anything being done to kind of help with that influx next week?
And Nancy?
Uh, again, we're waiting for a little-
Go ahead.
Uh, we're at, waiting for a little additional, uh, guidance from the state, uh, regarding how much, like, we're not sure if they're gonna say that students need to be tested exiting their school from out of state and then re, uh, tested again, so we're waiting for that guidance, and then we'll include that, and then push it out on social media, but to be honest with you, Nancy, we've been trying to get an additional testing site here for a while.
Okay.
I mean, we have a site-
Yeah, yeah.
-we're looking for a, a testing company, and it's complicated, because they have to be certified with the state, and they have to be able to push the numbers in and all of that, but we're competing with all the other towns wanting the very same thing. So what Sands has said, um, to us in our meetings is, listen, anybody can get a test, uh, in, in fairly short order, it's just inconvenient, right? So you've gotta wait, you can call and you can, um, make the appointment at the testing site, it's just you're gonna have to wait, uh, sometimes two, three, four hours, um, but I will, uh, I'm just looking here, the local testing locations can be accessed through fairfieldct.org backslash COVID-19 testing, and that lists all the testing sites, um, and I, I include that in my newsletter as well, but it, we're all in the same, we're all in the same place as the other towns, we just not, we can't get enough, but, but I thought it was reassuring that Sands said you can get one, it's just not convenient, because you gotta wait a while in line to get it.
Okay, so I was gonna say the same thing, because I think a lot of the, the students as they're leaving town are taking up a lot of the testing times as well, so they can get out of Dodge and go back to their hometowns, because I've heard stories of, at least in places like CBS and stuff like that, appointments for tests not being available at this point until after Thanksgiving.
And that's for the rapid, though, I think, Tom.
The universities are testing their own, they have their own contracted testing, uh, going on on their site, so typically those students would be not in our local testing, um, facility, uh, because they're being tested on-
Yeah, no, I understand.
...site.
And Tom, I think, 'cause I tried to get tests, I think it is for the rapid, I think, you know, to Sands and Brenda's point, like, if you were, you just have to wait, like, there are a few facilities where you might have to wait for hours and might not get the results for two or three days, the rapid tests seem to be the ones that are harder to come by, in terms of appointments.
Quite possibly.
The PSR, yeah, they have that rapid PSR, but that's hard to get too, you're right, Nancy.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Is there any other, uh, items that anyone wants to bring up or discuss?
Not for me.
No, thanks.
All right, well, thank you, and, uh, well, thank you, Mr. Danzer, for being our first public comment since COVID. It was, it was nice to have you on the line.
Thanks for opening it up to public comment.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, everyone, well-
I second it.
I hope you all have a lovely eve, lovely evening, and, um, thank you.
All right.
Motion to adjourn?
Yeah, uh, yeah, Tom called it, and I seconded it.
Oh, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Bye.
Good night, everyone.
All right, good night, thank you.